Welcome everybody at Town Hall number 35. The counting is updated now and should be correct. It's Tuesday, 14th of February. Happy Valentine's to everybody watching and here in the room. Today we're joined by Camara, by Felix, by Flyfools, Headelf, J O Five, JJ Sound, Knitschi, Mikasa, Oepi Capella, myself and TiVo. Thanks all for joining the session. It's great to see some new faces here. And while not new new, most of you were either already on Discord or Telegram or in the introduction section even in Discord. So thumbs up for that. It's always good to see. There we go. Yeah, basically for those new here, this is pretty much always the structure of this meeting. We first cover a bit of the workgroups. And then we have the section for the tasks that are outstanding. And after that, a little ecosystem wide mentions of stuff that's happening basically. And after that, there's room for open topics like OpenMake. So I'll dive right in. Yeah, let's just follow the list, might as well. On the Process Guild, that session is happening every Tuesday after the current session, so at 19 UTC. And TiVo, can I ask you to put a little reminder to what we were doing last week?
Yesterday? Good question. Ah, no, not yesterday, last week after Town Hall. Basically, two main discussions. One was organizing action items because Process Guild has a lot of them. And we created a priority map. And then another one was like a funneling, like onboarding process for ambassador program. And like what could be the minimum information required for those who get in contact of ambassador program and want to get involved or understand what it's related to. And yeah, that was basically the last week on Process Guild.
I think we wrapped up. It's only a week ago, but I'm really digging here in memory. I do remember that at the end of the session, we were very happy we concluded some task, but honestly. Not entirely sure what that concrete task was.
Maybe that was Treasury Guild. Because the next one on the list is Treasury Guild. And on there, we did kind of found two conclusions. One was the idea of having a Twitter management role for $280 per month. And if now everybody sees that that makes sense or somebody wants to get into where that number came from, we have a Treasury Guild meeting video and also a summary video and then meeting notes on the Myra board. I can drop the Myra board right now, also right now, taking notes of this Town Hall. And yeah, with no objections coming through, then basically this, we adopt that model and start using that road. And there will be more roads coming up. But now it's based on basically proposal structure. So next Treasury Guild, we definitely touch more roles, what needs to be done, how much we can allocate. And then we also started using Swarm Treasury Guild system. So today, actually, the first transaction was made. Almost 100 tasks was rewarded and over 5,000 AJs. So pretty big chunk cleaning up the part itself.
Yeah, good stuff, good stuff.
And yeah, related to Treasury Guild, why it's like in full force in use was that we agreed to one of like transaction fee and for two months.
TiVo, can I ask something? Did you just mention like Singularity Ambassador Program started using the Swarm, the Swarm distribution system for rewards? Was that accurate?
Yes.
Was it, is it weekly the same way as it's done in Swarm? Or and is it separate from Swarm? I didn't get that.
Yes, it will be weekly, basically at the same times when Swarm is doing. So it's basically a random sequence. Do we, does the click provide a Singularity group or S R M group contributions? But also done in the same kind of one period.
That's cool. What about the way how, you know, the way how Swarm organizes the task? Which one is done, which one is in progress and stuff? Are we implementing the same thing or what's happening exactly?
Yes, basically, the work what's already been done in Singularity, this will continue. We are here, we're not going anywhere. So whenever new ideas coming through, some want to like new kinds of tasks which never done before, we support you and see how we can use the system for that. Other than that, we are quite flexible with the task management and all kinds of approaches. So yeah, there are already marketing guild tasks, like few experiments there. And it's that stuff differently than other groups we are supporting in Treasury Guild. So yeah, just every guild finds their own way, how they like to do the work and how best makes sense to them. And we are here to support to make that visible on chain.
That's really cool to hear. Thanks a lot. I appreciate that.
Yeah, to me, that's the last part, like the on-chain part. To me, that's, that makes all the difference. Basically, all the efforts done in light of the Ambassador Program so far, they are somewhat traceable. There are D work and there's a sheet with all the transactions. And yeah, you can puzzle it out. But having the actual stuff included in the on-chain, in the metadata of the transactions, that really takes the, well, both the transparency but also the accountability to the next level. And that's, yeah, super happy with that.
Yeah, that's really cool. I appreciate that as well.
On that note, a little bit of vision, where I hope this goes. Because Singularity is related to AI. We having that kind of structured, like basically we're creating a database out of Cardano blockchain on the metadata. And my hope is that over years of collecting all kinds of undangable contributions and the way people interact and exchange value, we implement AI which is able to kind of understand the connections. And perhaps AI themselves will start creating tasks for us. Oh, you want to do this? Well, care as how hundreds of other projects have done it before. And this is my kind of ultimate hope to achieve. We'll see if it's actually possible.
Sounds good. Yeah, small steps and learning as we go. So good stuff. A quick question. I added on the sheet, usually I change this week and next week since it's a bi-weekly meeting. But I was thinking it could potentially be nice for having a Treasury meeting this week. Wanted to check in on that. Just because it's like the first week and we now start working with this system. I think it would be good to have like a, yeah, maybe a bit like a setup kind of session, like so we know all the ins and outs of basically how to use D work.
Fine by me.
Sounds great. Sounds great. And I think we can definitely move on the progress we made last time with some urgency. Cool.
This is even something what could fit quite well into Process Guild as well. Because now we have to challenge them that all D work activities have to somehow align to the Treasury system then. So making sure that everybody's on the same page. So what fit into both actually Treasury Guild but also Process Guild?
That's really nice. Almost the process, that process in the Process Guild is scaling mechanisms. Like we find it one time with the Twitter. How can we scale that up? That's cool. Nice.
Awesome. All right. Then checking back to the list, next would be the Podcast Workgroup, which I think since it's more or less merged with the Marketing Group right now, I think I'll simply start putting that under the Marketing Guild header. As you can see, there's currently three sessions. There's a workshop session on Monday, 19 UTC. There's a session on Thursday, 18 UTC. And then a meeting on Friday, 13 UTC. And this is also, all these numbers on the current slide, there's also a calendar on this slide. You can add that to Google Calendar if you want. You'll never be able to miss a meeting again. And now I notice Grandano is not in the session. Hmm, luckily Flyfools is here. Could you perhaps update a little bit from Marketing Guild side?
Yeah, sure. I somehow feel naked without Grandano in the chat. His setups make Marketing Guild sound so beautiful. I'll try and do a job. Okay, so we, since last week, we had a marketing workshop on the end of last week, which went well. And we decided to have a shift in sessions, have a marketing workshop at the start of the week. So this week, we were on Monday. And the timing of the marketing workshop might change in the coming weeks to try and find the most amount of engagement from you guys. Marketing Guild is going well. We have some tasks in the D work now, which you can apply to. We have an open call to submit a task in Marketing Guild. Here, this is a kind of, really wanting to open it out to you guys to try and find high quality material to try and put out. So you're more than welcome to apply to the tasks that are in progress and contribute there. So hmm. And other? I, I think that's about it. I would love if someone else wants to jump in and fill in anything I've forgotten. Yeah. Ah, well, the, there's currently an interim podcast ideation session. So if you guys want to get involved in being involved in something like the podcast in the future, we're gonna pull some people together over the next week or two to see what kind of engagement to what people are up to in this regard. Yeah. Well, that's about it, guys.
Great stuff. Yeah, I think in the next slide going over tasks, perhaps we could, I think there's a couple more open tasks currently, which we could have on. But I think the next slide goes there as well. So let me go there actually. Yeah, well, yeah, let's just follow the, follow the order for these. So the January ecosystem update blog post is out and also on D work. I did use the French translation slot for, I assigned that manually to Roger Caboty as part of the onboarding. So right now, the other four languages are still available. I think I saw just from the side of my eyes, yeah, there's some people applying already. It's gonna be tricky in a way because last time we had one batch of five blog posts in five languages. So there were 25 tasks. And then when there was a lot of interest, we could simply assign like, well, you had two so far. So you get your third right now. And yeah, right now, there's only four tasks. So they might be gone very quickly, which in a way is a luxury problem to have, of course. So yeah, it does make me wonder like, should we simply have the speed of people reacting to the task becoming available? Have that be the determining factor or? And maybe this is not the right moment to thoroughly dive into this topic. But yeah, it's interesting like how we do, how do we deal with? Let's say having a group of 10 translators. And then when an article comes online, they cannot all join because yeah, there's just one translation needed.
You change the task, you say join the translators team or whatnot. Then you say that they do the whole thing as a team. Yeah, whatever. And I have to collaborate and figure that stuff out themselves. No, just kidding. Absolutely right.
For one blog post, that feels like, oh, there we go.
Although to remember, we touched that topic before. And the idea was that everybody signs, assigns themselves on a task if that area are interested. And the idea is that well, there is gonna be always more articles. So now with the track record, well, it's gonna be confusing. The first perhaps month where we have Google Sheet and the two different Google Sheets, one for Swarm transactions and one from the old system. But ideally, we'll start seeing, okay, last week you did, this week you're gonna do. Or if it's basically based on themes, because when we onboarded new translators, they actually share what they would be interested in. Some were more like technical, some wanted more like that medical stuff. And so that maybe, maybe it comes down to per teams for some. And if somebody is eager to translate everything what comes through, then it's, then it's just like this position, like one task in one week, another in one week and so on.
Yeah, fair. And connected to this as well is the option of, which so far it did not turn into D work, but the option of supporting more languages. I think it was touched on during Knitschi's onboarding call that.
Yeah, who actually after you left, another one who done more also had, I think Arabic language or something. So, but I guess the article has to be something which then will benefit like larger audience to kind of see if there is an attraction.
We do make, that's even another avenue. We do already make a selection on which blocks get translated. It's not 100% of them, which we could do at the same time. Yeah, but well, right now we don't. That would be also a way of providing more work to the translators.
I, go ahead, Roger.
Yeah, just to get into the conversation. Yeah, I mentioned to TiVo that it would be interesting because I'm a native Arabic speaker. It would be interesting if Arabic is included. I looked at the list of languages available and there are some languages that are not, let's say, as spoken as Arabic. For example, English, I mean, English is, all the articles are written in. There is Chinese and some couple of other languages, French included. Arabic is, I guess, the third most or maybe fourth most spoken language. So it kind of made sense to me to include it in the list. Just especially that there is a wide interest in AI in general.
Agreed, agreed. And the fact that Dubai is coming online, there's a lot of Arabic speakers in the region. I think it makes perfect sense here.
And I also, I didn't, I didn't mention that perhaps before, but one of, for example, one of the biggest, let's say, applications of AI in, for Arabic speakers is NLP. And NLP done for Arabic, if anyone is familiar with that, is very hard. A lot of big companies are actually struggling with it. So if Singularity could have some couple of solutions, perhaps from researchers, from Arabic countries, that could be a great value added in my opinion.
Interesting, dude.
That's really nice. And on that subject, it kind of reminds me of the obstacles, struggles that Marketing Guild are going through right now. One of the main obstacles I see is actually creating the tasks to get other people involved. We have right now a growing set of people who are kind of ready to do tasks when they come out and apply. As we've seen these past few weeks, there are generally two obstacles. This making the tasks, putting it out there, which could be solved with more of a taskmaster role as in the line of discussions of Treasury Guild and Process Guild. Also, the other obstacle with marketing is actually leveling up that content. So one thing that came up this past week is using a system similar to Sway whereby we can integrate feedback into content that's created in the Marketing Guild. For instance, we have some AI videos, we have some AI write-ups that are not to the level that they could be. So one of the things we're thinking about now, trying to implement now in Pros, in Marketing Guild is this almost Sway style system looking for contributors, people who can get involved in terms of reviewing other people's work, other people's tasks. Yeah, to help level up in a really good spirited environment. So if any of you guys are interested in getting involved in tasks for review and for helping give feedback, constructive criticism, then please let me know. I'm gonna make a task for it on D work now, where you can apply to it and I'll post it in the chat.
Fly, I'm actually wondering, did you speak to any one of the team from Sway about this? It's really interesting to have like content created by, you know, by the marketing team like put in there. And there's like this one place where people can go and see like all the things we have worked on and all the conversations happening about every single product that's a coming up. Really interesting.
I haven't spoken with any of the Sway team, but I think if we do a good enough job, then they'll hear about it. And we can, we can, we can share it with them. What I see now is that we already have the skills between us to kind of go for it and yeah, prove our.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I bet most people here would agree that like most of the times when I get into the Discord, I get confused. Especially there's so much things going on, like you miss on a lot of things. Like, okay, there is this meeting going on, we don't know about it. Sometimes there's a couple of meetings that are not announced. Sometimes there is some content being created and not, not any, like maybe a couple of people know that it happened. I mean, perhaps if you ask around, like how many people heard about this Sway video? Like perhaps nobody did, you know, maybe a couple of people, but that's about it. But if there is like a single place where you can go and it's like graphically pleasing, let's say, to see and to look at and to go to, it just makes your life easier.
Agreed. I would, I would just like to maybe add on to that. And I know in the stupid world that's called Web3, they're building portals, okay? And now you use your NFT to get access to the portal. I'm not saying we need that. I'm saying maybe you hook a bot up that gives you access to this Singularity community like website or something like that. I'm not saying it has to be beautiful for starts or anything like that. But it's a bulletin board. It's a place for people to see what's going on with regards to any of the tasks that we're posting on D work and stuff. And I think it's something that what we're doing now is what pretty much decentralized, open source application bunch of people are gonna be doing. And to develop what we're doing here, all these processes of like workaround, D work, Google Forms, what they're currently doing is they just go screw it. We eventually know we need one spot. And that's like our own little community website. And then you integrate the chat into that website. Yes, it divides from Discord, Telegram and all these other places. But if the community wants the community news that's for them, they can select it there. And then they have a bulletin board because there's a few projects going, you know? And I agree, it's not, I'm not saying it's hard to track, but I'm just saying like sometimes you can just be most reading things. And you know, your brain's always thinking like, how are these projects gonna work together if they do? So waffle, but a single platform, take it off of D work. I'm not saying like change drastically or whatever. But you just go put there, okay, there's a new announcement for people that are community value added. There you go. There's the website for you, right? And then it becomes a bit easier. And furthermore, it's like because of that, the contributors, what they call in the Web3 space is alpha. Like if we pick up like, hmm, there's some rebranding that's being done on this project. It's like, oh, I wonder what's kicking off, you know? Not saying it adds speculation, but it also adds more interest. And it allows a person to be closer to the community as well.
Yeah, man, I am so with you on that. Actually, this weekend, I contacted, there's a project called Quantum Tech. And they have this, what they call badges, which is a way to measure community engagement. So they have a beta program going on right now in which projects can onboard into their system where you, for events like this, you can, you can assign people to get a badge. And then this badge can be minted in like a plethora. I think it's like six blockchains. So with, you can create gated communities and like you can gate websites. So I'm so with you, man. I think there's definitely things out there that already that we can kind of utilize in Singularity Net.
Yeah, I would just say like, given how many people are in the chat right now, I wouldn't necessarily token gated. You know, it'd be like access for everybody to help start growing. And then if you see like more valuable players, you start giving them a bit more of a private place if you want. But it's supposed to be transparent and everything. So it's a thing to token gate it would be very limiting for the guys who are coming in in the next two, three years that was on account.
Yeah, man.
I do feel we should take a pretty structural approach to this because, for example, we do have a Discord forum. It's at community.singularity.io. This has been running for six years, I think, by now, so five and a half. And for sure, we can have a section there focused on, well, either the Marketing Guild specifically or the broader Ambassador Program. That's completely fine. I feel like the, the way we're using D work right now is, is, I don't know. I quite love it, to be honest. It's not perfect, but it's pretty awesome. And that has Discord integration. So in a way, if people are participating on D work, yeah, this Discord account is already very requisite. So that, then they would be on the Discord server. That's very up to figuring this out.
For me as well, actually, I'm very new to D work. And it's been really great to start getting involved in that. And that's thanks to you guys, actually.
Indeed, I'm gonna be jumping and learning D work now. First clicks the last night, so I don't know what I'm talking about. But it's like, it's a B to B product, right? That we're pretty much experimenting with. All the problems we suffer now, if you just program the problems, I know you need to pay people to get that done, which program the problems and then you have a white label service you can offer to any NFT that event or any blockchain that becomes, that's a more interoperable with any of the coins that are in within the Singularity Net ecosystem. So I'll go here.
I quite agree on, I think both perspectives are right there because right now we use DWork because from our own experience, I would say it's just one of the most sophisticated tools around. But for example, it's not open source, you can't do a lot of stuff with it when you say, okay, want to build on top of it. I would say for now, DWork is amazing and we should definitely experiment and figure out how those processes actually work with this kind of tools, build experiments and expertise. But for long term, really looking on building fully open source, blockchain task management systems, which can easily, like you said, for example, going interoperable between the different ecosystems across chains, right?
I would also here add that what we are building on top of DWork is not just some tasks, but we're actually taking the information out and we're also building expertise on the spot because we spent quite a lot of months to actually even figure out if you do research first and then implement a project on DWork. And we found so many issues already in the first implementation, but it's like kind of getting used to it. But the fact that we have now that experience and know-how of like how would like a multitask bundle together work with each other, like one TWork task is completing a step on another TWork task and all that kind of shenanigans. Quite interesting.
Can I please ask a stupid thing, which would be to make a task in which it is to complete the task. Right? So you figure out, like me as a layman, can figure out like, okay, I've created a task, I've made a document, I've posted it wherever and now I can say I've completed it. Right? Just so like I can get the full process of like how you guys want certain things, like for example, I went into all the images that are posted there in the Marketing Guild on the Google thing. And I was like, do you, do you guys want like Ben cut out? Do you want the logo in the background, like on a chalkboard, like? What do you want? You know what I mean? Like, they say don't give creative guidelines, but it's just like a general northern start to be like, okay, look, we're looking for things that will fit for good thumbnails on Twitter posts. We're looking for, I don't know, man. I'm not saying like a Photoshop person to come in and cut it out, but it's just to give general direction because I can, I can already use all of that for like my thumbnails and stuff that I want, I wanted to do. So for me, that's good to market my side out, but to give back or like add value, I think could help if it's defined.
I think it's a great idea to have a, I don't know, like, yeah, put in chat as well, like my first DWork task. Could have a little trying around with submitting work. Usually submitting work just for a bit of context is just putting a link to a document or providing a bit of context on why you would be applying for a task. But yeah, that's a cool idea.
Yeah, it'd be really cool to, for people to apply with something that they'd like to do, maybe a previous piece of work or something. That would give some great context about how we can kind of fit tasks to people, what skills we have in the group.
Absolutely, yeah, like, yeah, in a way, that's, that's kind of how on the marketing board right now, there's this setup TikTok account task. That would be, would be perfect. I think if in the task description, yeah, it's completely fine to ask for, please enter previous work. So we have an idea of your, of your quality or similar. And I think a lot of the, well, that's also where we're still learning as we go. A lot of it comes down to like having the task description as, as perfect as possible. So it's just, you can only read it one way and you will do it correct always. And that's, that's in practice how it works.
That's the game, right?
Yeah, I mean, for instance, like, since we talked about the, about the TikTok page, a lot of people are interested, which is actually really cool. Because we need a lot of content, that would be really nice. And most people who are talking about this, they say like, what should we do? Should we provide a portfolio? Should we provide like something to, you know, to prove that we have some experience in doing that. And I mean, most people that wrote in the channels, I just say like, if you can, I mean, we're gonna meet next week, I guess, yeah, for the, to talk about the TikTok and the videos and all these things. And I, I just say to people, like, if you have a video that would be cool, link would be very nice, we can see your previous work. If you don't have that, you can make a video and show it to us and let's talk about it. Is it good? Is it not? Yeah, let's just, you know, look at each other's work and evaluate it and make each other better, basically.
Perfect. That's the spirit, right? I mean, yeah, sounds great. Um, let me check, because I do have a couple of more topics I want to touch on before hopping to the bit more open session side of things. Yeah, I did create, no, this was actually before the weekend, Friday evening, we was a bit of a last minute call. We did create a task on there as well and, and some people in this, in the current audience are also joining in there. I think we ended up with nine people applying for checking the deep funding proposals on basically compliance with the rules, just a very yeah, almost like a technical check, let's say, on if people played by the rules or not. So thanks for those who applied for that. It's currently ongoing and yeah, it's good to see that's actually being picked up and seems to be working. And then I also created a task for a session tomorrow. Would basically like to invite you all, anybody who wants to is very welcome to join. Want to have a little testing session on the voting for the loyalty pool allocations. There's some, we had a couple of community governance call on this. Basically, yeah, it's a bit of a puzzle how to translate these proposals into something which can be voted on chain. And, and yeah, some proposals touch like similar approaches, so I'm thinking to merge these. And there's also some questions which we might need like a two-step approach. And yeah, I want to just play around a little with some forms and see what the outcomes would be. Yeah, just, just to have a bit more context and experience there. So if you happen to have time at 11:00 AM UTC, do hop on Discord and feel free to join in. And there's, yeah, like I said on DWork, I think it's on the team tasks board. You can find this task. And something which I did not add to the slide, but which I do want to mention is it's not super concrete right now, but we're looking to on the OpenCock, OpenCock Hyper Run side of things. The website itself and there's a, there's a wiki. And yeah, trying to see if we could get a group together to basically bring that back to 2023 because it somehow got stuck in 2002, I believe would be pretty accurate. It's properly outdated. That will get, yeah, I'm thinking like maybe a workgroup approach or like a temporary. Not entirely sure how to, to shape it yet, but do want to call it out already, just if there's people interested also in, in figuring out how we could best go about that, that would be very welcome. So do reach out. Then I think we're getting close. Yeah, this is the pretty much the last slide. So I do want to call out a couple of things. There's coming Thursday, two days from now at 15 UTC, there's another community governance session on this loyalty rewards, which I mentioned. And the vote for that is coming up pretty shortly. That's on February 22, 26. So yeah, this, this will be the last community call before the vote. I'm thinking to host one during the vote, but at the same time, that might be not optimal. I guess that will be one of the agenda items during the call. Yeah, so feel free to join that session. And then on deep funding, it's actually news that there is no town hall this week, since we had weekly town halls for the past month, I believe. But this, that did result in a new YouTube channel. All the recordings of these tunnel sessions, which again, shout out to Singularity Swarm, Catalyst Swarm, the Swarm people for organizing that very professionally was, yeah, it was truly a pleasure. So right now we do have a deep funding YouTube channel with all the presentations on there. So do check that out if you're interested. And then a final call out before I shut up is tomorrow at 19 UTC, there will be a viewing party of the first episode of the Mind Plugs Podcast. David Brin is the guest and the host is Lisa Ryan, together with Ben Gertl and Grace, the robot. So yeah, the idea of this viewing party is to basically watch the premiere and also have live commentary. So a little bit meta level, have commentary and a community discussion. That will be on the Singularity Net YouTube channel. And I think that's it from the, the callouts I want to do. And that leaves us with some room for, yeah, open mic if anybody has any suggestions, questions, ideas, thoughts. Now would be the time.
It seems to me that the Ambassador Program is fairly new and that there's more and more people joining. As you mentioned, there's more people on this meeting than there have been previously. And I think it might be a good idea in the future to start the meeting with a quick introduction to what the Ambassador Program is and how it works, even one or two minutes. And I was wondering if you could give me that synopsis now.
Sure thing. And you're accurate. This has not been the, this amount of new people has not been the case recently. So that's, that's first of all, great to see and also thanks for joining in. Yeah, well, broadly speaking, it's, it's not super new. We started back in May last year. So we're still in the first year, but not, not super, super new. Basically, the, the idea of the Ambassador Program is to provide a way where the Singularity Net community can contribute to spreading the word. And yeah, sharing and communicating, meeting with others who share the same interests and passions. And yeah, it's, it's very open. Where since the beginning, we try to be very open to if, if people have ideas they want to execute on, on sharing, spreading the word about Singularity Net to facilitate that. That would be the, the very short version. But feel free to ask.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, it's a great question. It's a great question. And I think maybe it warrants another question, Peter, of it ends in a few months' time. I think I, I've joined fairly recently as well. So I'd be very curious to hear what your perspective on coming into these last months. What are the things that you would like to emanate? Are there any considerations that you have from your time overseeing what's been happening?
Well, I would first of all say I'm, I'm very much not in line with the last month of the program. It's, it's not ending after one year, if that's what you're referring to. Or maybe I misunderstood, but that's what I got from your remark.
Ah, that wasn't the point when it ends, I guess, from when it started. And coming into these months, what are the considerations, any considerations you have?
Well, mostly just tons of appreciation for the people who join in. I think we grew quite a lot also on, well, I guess on the professional side of things, let's say, like procedures, tooling. But also still very much learning clearly. And it's, to me, it's amazing to see, well, for example, I mean, not to put you on a pedestal, if my English is working. But like, like you and Crandano stepping up, leading the Marketing Guild. Yeah, that's really inspirational to see. That's, that's basically zoomed out, that's, that's what I do it for, let's say, like to, to facilitate the self-organizing side of things. So really enjoying it more and more.
Yeah, it's, it's really nice to see how you let it happen and kind of, yeah, facilitate. I, I almost think of, I have an image of a kind of gardener, you know, and, and you're kind of there like nourishing us, giving us what we need.
No, I used to garden a lot, but then I got a job at Singularity Net.
And now you're gardening people. Communities. Yeah, man, that's beautiful.
I really love the idea of self-organizing workgroups and economies through the giving of one's time and skills as, as a task comes up that actually it would automatically increase in value. And like if it wasn't in demand, say it was like a task to clean toilets and nobody really wanted to do it. And over time, the value of that task would go up until somebody did it. And then there would be a check system of a reviewer who would go and, you know, like if somebody next uses that toilet, then they get a notification, was this toilet cleaned correctly? And they click yes on their phone or device or whatever. And then that confirms that the task was completed. And I know that that's, you know, a little bit of ways from where we are now, but, but I love how you've incorporated DWork as it seems like it's kind of like a step towards that whole concept. And I think that we can use that in an evolving society where people don't necessarily have to have full-time jobs, but they can take on tasks that are of interest to them and in their skillset and get rewarded for them in the currency of their, well, in, in my vision, it's like these self-sustaining cities that we need to build. But yeah, so that's all I have to say right now.
That's dope. That is such a good idea.
And I have to say, I also like, I mean, I did see bits and pieces here and there on, across social media. It's also very interesting to see, Camaro, for example, you coming in and then having this fresh perspective. That's, that's also that's just super valuable. So thanks a lot for that.
Thank you. I'd add, I'd like to add a little bit more fresh perspective. So I've been with Singularity Net, like involved in the ecosystem since one of the first days. I bought in when it was, you know, during the initial ICO, when it was really high and then, and then I've bought more over time. And I've, I've always known that the project is gonna succeed and that everything is, it, it all looks really good. And I know that it's a long-term thing that I'm holding for and, and it seems to be ramping up here really fast. But I am one of those people who, this isn't my life. I'm not a tech person. So, and I'm not in the crypto space, I'm not a programmer. I'm a, I'm a counselor, I'm a visionary, I'm an environmental scientist and I'm a mom. So I don't have time to, well, I'm making time now, but I haven't had time to like try to figure out what all the different pieces are and how they all fit together. So what I believe is that we can reach a much larger demographic of the population with Singularity Net if we make marketing materials that reach people at like a way gentler, kind of, I almost don't want to use the words dumbed down, but like a more simplistic approach to like what's exciting about AI, what's exciting about Singularity Net and all the different pieces and how they all fit together and how that's gonna make a better future for everyone. How that's gonna improve things on the planet, why they should get involved now, why they should get AGIX, why they should, you know, look at Singularity DAO for their finances. You know, why they should consider joining the Reju program and, and link it all together and help build a picture of a future in people's minds that makes them excited so that we can really grow this, this whole economy of systems. Because right now it's, it's very segregated, like it's very hard to get a different Because right now it's, it's very segregated, like it's very hard to get a definitive picture of what Singularity Net is doing without spending a really long time looking at each different thing. And, and I don't feel as though I have my finger on the pulse of all of it yet. And so one of the reasons why I'm here is to learn it and then I figure I can capture it as I go and then I can explain it to other people.
Sounds great. And if I can chime in quickly before you, Peter. I think that's, that's where us community come in as, uh, and especially the non-technical people, the artists. I think the, the role of the artist is not to add anything unnecessary, but to present an idea in its simplest form. And I think with very complicated ecosystem and, uh, and concepts like far away from everyday reality, I think we need, uh, artists and, and people like us, uh, to be that membrane. Um, yeah, nice.
Yeah, fully agree. And also as, as Felix points out, um, yeah, that, that is, uh, in itself already, uh, ties to the marketing guild, but, um, I, I do think that could maybe, and maybe not right now, but perhaps in a, in a separate session, um, just one of the marketing guild meetings, uh, would be a nice fit. Uh, to get a bit of a deep dive into this, because yeah, basically the, I think the, for the alternative for dumping down would be like, um, pretty much like an explain me like I'm five kind of approach, let's say. Uh, we do have some of that content. Um, the converter bridge video comes to mind, which, um, which was awesome. Um, but yeah, that's only a very small piece of, uh, technology compared to all the stuff we have. So that, there's, there's tons of room for, uh, yeah, that's, that's great feedback. Um, yeah, looking at the clock, I think we're drawing slowly to a close of this meeting. Um, final check, any questions, any remarks that need to be added to this meeting?
Yes, Peter, um, for the loyalty voting test session tomorrow, how do you submit the task? You just show up or do you need a screenshot or something? How do you submit it?
Um, if I set it up correctly, which you now make me doubt, um, but you should be able to, um, apply. And then, um, you don't need to submit work. Um, you can just apply for, um, what's the correct term on DWork? I think apply for task.
It says there's submit work. It just says submit work. It doesn't say apply for task. It says submit work, so I'm wondering how to submit it.
No, fair. Uh, then, um, you can type whatever you like in that, uh, text box and then I'll know, uh, you, you applied.
Alright, great.
Set it up correctly, but, uh, you, you don't need to submit anything there. There's no requirements or, or, yeah, anybody's welcome to join.
Alright, cool. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up. Now I'm really wondering what Felix is typing and if I should wait for that. No, don't wait for it. I'm actually trying to find, trying to find the good answer to, to, to Kamara's question. Like, hmm, what, what, what is ambassador program about in short sentence? I'd say AI and blockchain technology will definitely disrupt the future of humankind. Singularity Net aims to become one of the ecosystems where visioners and builders can build on future decentralized artificial intelligence. And the ambassador's program helps to make this happen through building a garden where we cultivate experts. Because that's the whole thing will grow over time, we need experts. But you can't study this shit here in, in university, like blockchain AI, what the fuck is this about? So, so the people which are here and which engage already on a very early stage, they start to build experience and expertise, which makes them over time to expand and reliable resource to further build the ecosystem. Interesting. Spot on.
Nice.
I quit, I don't have to type it anymore. That's, that was a great idea, actually. Cool. Good stuff.
Yeah. I'll jump in real quick. Uh, I just got a quick question. Uh, really, um, is a, well, just statement, I guess I'll start with is, uh, I really like what, uh, Singularity Net has to, has brought to the table so far and as far as into the discussion of AGI. And I really look up to Ben, uh, met him once and I, I really just, I'm looking through your guys' stuff, you know, past few months and, and, and trying to figure, is there, is there somebody that could sit with me for a second sometime to like break down all like the, what is it that, because you're so all over the place, is there a definition of like, uh, a mission statement or somewhere like, because it's kind of confusing like how far, it feels fractured because it's so over the place. I'm confused.
Yeah, I've heard this, uh, multiple times in the past, uh, weeks, um, and taking note of that. Um, well, for sure, um, yeah, there's, there's all kind of like, there's, every now and then there's just people hanging out on Discord, uh, to simply chat, uh, like, I, I don't mind answering questions at all. Uh, but right now we don't have like a dedicated, um, explain me Singularity Net sessions, but maybe we should.
I think the big idea is, and, and who here in this system that we're talking with is actually a employee of, uh, Singularity Net?
That will be, and Haley is also in this call.
I am, yes.
Nice to meet you guys.
Nice to meet you.
Uh, but yeah, it's an interesting question. Um, and there are some, uh, some pieces, um, of content in, in the works which aim to solve this, but, um, that can honestly be optimized probably. Um, that's, uh, yeah, makes me wonder if maybe should, we should, we should have some inspections or, or.
Excuse me, excuse me. Um, I have a quick, um, suggestion to make on that note. Um, we could have something like maybe a sort of like a, a doc or, yeah, a slide where we, maybe we can collate, um, the, well, like the explanations from everybody, like from you, for example, Peter, maybe Eli, Zivo. Like, uh, it like writes your own perspective or how you would explain it to, yeah, basic newcomer. And, uh, you could pull it all down into like a certain like slide that we could drop, uh, maybe put it somewhere in the introductions channel or maybe drop it, uh, yes, uh, yes, fairly like introductions, uh, like in session, we can just instead of creating a session over and over for every newcomer that we have, you can just create a, a doc or a slide, a good slide for them to like check out and has all the required information. It's like saves us a lot of time. Uh, I'd say that we won't have to go over the process of introducing and explaining everything every time we have a newcomer.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I, I do have to say we did a website overhaul. We had this in mind as well. Um, at the same time, it sounds like, uh, there's still quite some work to be done on this, uh, on this side of things. Uh, but yeah, like, uh, suggested would be very open to these, uh, these type of sessions. Absolutely.
Sounds great, guys.
Awesome. And then, um, ah, yes, as Tiva posted in the, in the chat, on SingularityNet.io slash ecosystem, uh, you can have a pretty solid overview of, uh, which, uh, projects are within the Singularity Net ecosystem. All with their own, um, yeah, you can just keep clicking and, and dive into their respective rabbit holes, because there are quite some. Yeah. So thanks for bringing that up indeed. I think that brings us pretty much to the end of this, this call.
I just, I just want to pop in for a second. One of the things that, that comes up for me often is that SNET, you know, we, we, it's so exciting that we've got this thriving ambassador community now and this thriving deep community now. But one of the things that SNET could really use is, um, a thriving developer community, AI developers. And, and then of course for the OpenCog AGI folks, they're interested in that. And I just wanted to kind of put it out there for anybody, if anyone is interested in, you know, has some technical interest or, or background and is interested in how we as ambassadors can help move forward a, a, a dev community within SNET. Don't have any specific suggestions, just thought I'd put it out there.
Can I please ask a like pretty blunt question? But let's say I'm in a predicament where I have a friend who's done neuro-linguistic programming and works at one of the best programming firms in Africa. He's been working on his own little artificial intelligence, little process bot thingy, whatever you want to call it, for like five, six years. How do I entice him and his crazy powerful mind that like helped me understand a lot more about what I'm actually looking at here? I don't entice this guy to come and be like, alright, cool. I'm already on GitHub. I post some of my stuff that I do for like, he does Microsoft apps and whatever, right? But like you'll post the clock or whatever, just in a different skin, but you can use it. So how do I entice him to go and go, okay, cool. I can take this stuff that I've been working on for six years, company side, and bring it here and know that it's safe. You know, like, I don't know if he's gonna not want to share his, his source, you know, um, maybe to a selected few people. I don't know. I don't know what his problems are for him to say no. Right? Because I don't approach him and then go like, no. I want to be like, I'm have a look.
Absolutely, totally. And, and, and we're happy to set up a, a, a meeting and, and discuss, you know, onboarding and how the platform works. Basically, the platform is, is largely a listing registry and a, a payment platform. So he keeps control of his AI, or his, yeah, his AI models. And then this just becomes a space where there's a marketplace, people can find what he's offering and pay him for it via blockchain. So, uh, what we probably need is a little bit better description and introduction to how the platform works from an AI, um, developer's perspective, you know? And this is useful both for, for deep and for individual developers. But maybe, maybe he's interested in, in coming in and, and having that discussion and, um, helping spread that word as well. One of the nice things about being on the platform is, is then SNET itself can promote his services, right? Because we promote the marketplace and the services on it. So you get, um, uh, free and, and, and interested community and promotion and everything if you have a great service, so. And as Peter mentioned, deep funding, getting paid to develop a service to put on the platform.
Okay, sweet. Thank you so much for, for that clarity. Um, I'll ponder on it and I'll come up with another one or two questions in the next few, um, town halls. Thank you for your time.
Cool.
Thanks for asking and joining. Um, yes, as Fly was mentioned, uh, we're running over a little bit, uh, ten minutes by now, but at the same time, uh, it's a great company to, uh, to run over with, so, um, that's all good. Uh, but yeah, it's, uh, it's time to wrap up now. So, um, yeah, as mentioned, um, there's a ton of, um, other meetings, events, uh, happening, so feel free to, uh, hop in those and keep an eye on the, um, I guess the ambassador Twitter, Singularity Net Twitter. There's, um, as Tiva now posted in the chat, that's the Zoom link for the Process Guild meeting, meeting, which is about to start. So yeah, once again, uh, thanks all for joining and hope to see you soon.
Ciao, ciao. Thank you.
Either, would you mind just explaining what the Process Guild is before you, or you've got to start that meeting right now?
No, I can. Um, it's, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, basically we try to, um, think about and, and, uh, shape the internal processes of the ambassador program, like what's happening, how do we, for example, um, like Tiva mentioned initially, uh, or earlier in the meeting, like the process of onboarding somebody who does translations, like just to completely map out this whole process, that, that would be an example. Or shaping, um, instead of doing like tasks, um, shaping up, um, more like a, a role and how would, how this would function within DWork, for example, and within workgroups, like that kind of, yeah, procedural side of things.
Right, systems.
To me, it's like a call where you're basically humans to computation. So whatever issue is raised, everything goes through that. But sometimes Process Guild takes a decision, okay, we're not going to discuss that and move it to the another call and see if that comes back with a better answer or result. And yes, the other side is where we try to look at the high level is that the way we interact could and should we change it? And take, take in task one by one and actually do it, so.
Thank you.
I just want to put a, a little shout out there every now and then, um, basically after every session, uh, Tiva also records a little meeting recap, so that basically gives an update on the past meeting in like two or three minutes. So it could be interesting to, um, check the ambassador guild's YouTube channel for, um, yeah, for this kind of recaps, then that would also give a proper idea on, um, what kind of topics are covered. Alright, then that's all for now. Thanks again.